The Senate will come to order. We'll revert to the Third Order of Business. Messages from the House. The Secretary will read the first message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to inform you that the House of Representatives of the state of Minnesota is about to adjourn the 2025 Special Session. Signee die. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
Members, no action is required. The Secretary will read the next message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to announce the passage by the House of the following House file herewith transmitted. House File Number 16. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
Again, members, no action is required. We will proceed to the next Order of Business, which is the Fourth Order of Business. First reading of House Bills. The Secretary will give the bill its first reading.
House File Number 16, a bill for an act relating to data centers modifying various environmental and energy regulatory requirements governing data centers.
The House file has been given its first reading. Remaining under motions and resolutions, Senator Murphy for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that an urgency be declared within the meaning of Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of Minnesota with respect to House File Number 16 and that the rules of the Senate be so far suspended as to give House File 16 its second and third reading and place it on its final passage, and I request a roll call.
Roll call requested, roll call granted. The Secretary will take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules. Senator Friends, I believe you're the person who's going to do the remotes, or is it going to be Senator Bowden? Senator Bowden, for those who are voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes no.
And Senator Fattay votes no. Senator Zazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Lang votes no. All senators having voted, who desires a vote? The Secretary will close the roll. There being 46 ayes and 19 noes, the motion to suspend rules prevails. The Secretary will give the House file its second reading.
House File Number 16.
The House file has been given its second reading. I will now call on the author of the bill to explain the bill. That would be Senator Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate File 16 is a proposal that deals with a new industrial age in Minnesota that focuses on technology. It's scary. It's exciting. It is up to us to make decisions going forward about how Minnesota is going to embrace, but also control, the presence of data centers in our state. There are three of us that would like to discuss that with the members. Myself, looking at the provisions in the bill. It's not a very long one, but it's very dense, of how large data centers. We already have 42 smaller data centers that are all across our state. There are three of them in my Senate district, and you will find them located in the handout that's provided to you throughout primarily the metropolitan area. So I would... We're looking at the way in which we are going to, in a sense, exploit the benefits while being a partner with giving tax benefits themselves to particularly now coming up the large-scale data centers, which we define in... We define in, if you have the bill in front of you, they're defined in Section 8. And later on, further information about them And then Senator Friends would like to speak to you about the utility planning and ratepayer protections, about the clean energy tariff, and about the community benefits program and the data center fees. And in wrap-up, Senator Johnson Stewart is going to talk to you about probably, for Minnesota, the most important permitting process, and that has to do with water appropriations. You may know, anyway, that Minnesota has one of the most, if not the most sophisticated water appropriations permitting process in the country. She's also going to speak about green building standards and about the prevailing wage and about the impact of an environmental assessment worksheet. We would then welcome any questions on those different areas that any of you might have, as well as, after assuming we reached a third reading, that we welcome your comments, your judgments. One of the things that often comes to us in thinking about data centers is its... A data center's relationship to the extremely fast-moving artificial intelligence, and I call it an industry as well, in this, across the world, not just in Minnesota or the United States, but across the world. And what kinds of impacts that's going to have that are facilitated by data centers, that is up to us to control, to apply ethical standards, and no matter how sophisticated data centers, artificial intelligence may become, what they do not have, as far as I can see, is the ability to make moral judgments about the ethical use of artificial intelligence. And we have already seen how abused it can become. So a large-scale data center is added to the eligibility for the state's current sales and other tax incentives for the current data centers. And it is defined there. If you want to take a look at that language, I won't get into how technical that becomes. But if you have questions about it, we certainly can go there. And so with that, Mr. President, that is opening remarks, and I'll come back at the end to talk more about the future of Minnesota in a number of areas. And in this particular bill, it has to do with the impacts, the challenges, the dangers, if you will, of a new industrial age in Minnesota, and that is technology. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Friends.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members. Thank you, Senator Rest, for presenting the bill. Members, I'd like to speak to you about the energy provisions of the bill. That falls into three basic areas. The planning and the ratepayer protections, the clean energy tariffs, and the community benefits. First, the planning and ratepayer protections. According to the terms of the bill, the Public Utilities Commission must consider the ability of the data center to meet the 100% clean energy by 2040 goals. To be clear, Minnesota is a 100% clean energy by 2040 states. The data centers must agree to those terms. There must be no cost shifting. The ratepayer protections go something like this. A data center built in a utility territory cannot, repeat, cannot have a negative effect on the residential or commercial ratepayers. That has to be part of the contract that the data center builder signs. And further, the PUC must consider any other factors which bear on the public interest. This includes siting by residential areas, water impacts, the ability of the utility to supply the energy. All of that is built into the language of this bill, and those are some of the strongest planning and ratepayer protection in the country. Many states are now dealing with data centers and how to incorporate the substantial economic development factors, and included in those are the jobs which my colleagues will talk about. Number two, the clean energy tariffs. This is nation-leading language. Data centers, to be clear, do not produce any carbon emissions. There is no wastewater, and in Minnesota, they too will run on 100% clean energy by 2040. First, in the clean energy tariffs. Public utilities, that is the investor-owned utilities, are required to offer clean energy language and ask the data centers to pay all proportional costs to add any clean energy. That is the generation, that is the transmission, that is connecting to the grid. The clean energy language prohibits cost shifting. We don't like cost shifting. This means the cost of the data centers must be borne by the data centers themselves. Finally, the ECO exemption. Members may remember Senator Rarick's work on ECO, that's efficiency. The language in this bill will allow the data centers to be exempted from the ECO requirements, and likewise, the utilities, large and small, that host them. Finally, members, one of the big wins in the bill is the community benefits. One of our goals in our energy ideology in the Senate is to help low-income Minnesotans. The community benefits require the data centers to pay, based on the size of the data center, anywhere from $2 million to $5 million a year. That money is paid in to the Department of Commerce, Weatherization, and Low-E income Efficiency. That money is every year for the data center in existence. It also is designated for low income. That means we're going to help Minnesotans who have less with their energy use, efficiency, and bills. The stakes of the community benefits depend on the size of the data center, $2 million to $5 million. With that, Mr. President, I'd like to hand it over to my colleague, Senator Ann Johnson Stewart.
Senator Ann Johnson Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Senators Rest and Friends. So I'm going to talk just briefly about the environmental components of this data center bill. I served as a member of the Environmental Working Group, and we were primarily concerned with the water permitting and environmental assessment components of data center siting and construction. During our working group meeting, there were two of us, two of the three who very much wanted to require an environmental impact study for every data center project built along with its emergency generators. We were not successful in getting that, and we were also not successful in getting an environmental assessment worksheet, or is EAW as part of those permitting requirements. However, I am proud of the fact that we did make some incremental progress around the whole topic of managing the water and the environmental resources that are required, and those are outlined in the first sections of the bill. Section 3 of the bill authorizes the DNR also to request additional information about data center projects that propose to use more than $100 million gallons of water per year. You will hear much information in the bill and moving forward about the Minnesota Business First Stop Program, which is administered through the Department of Economic Development, and they are the ones that will be working with data center developers. The bill also requires the DNR to ensure that a water use permit is authorized for those centers that consume more than $100 million gallons of water per year, and that's a considerable improvement over the type of permitting that has been used to date. So in summary, the permitting has really been improved. We'll continue to work on it. It will... This data center bill will authorize and encourage the DNR and other agencies to consider the impacts in a way that hasn't been done before. The DNR is also required, or will also be able to require a permit applicant to conduct an Aquifer test. And again, those are the very first steps that we've laid out moving forward. I also just want to talk briefly about the construction of the data centers themselves. In my research, I talked to several contractors in the state, one of whom is currently building one of the hyper data centers. In the area, these data center... The data center buildings will have to comply with one or more design... I'm sorry. They have attained one or more design or green building standard certifications. So I think that's very good. And very importantly, the data centers will agree to pay prevailing wage rates for those skilled laborers that are building the data centers. These data centers are very expensive. They require 1,000 workers to build them. And I confirmed that, in fact, those workers will be, again, paid prevailing wages. But every three years, the equipment is recommissioned and replaced, and those jobs will be held by highly skilled tradesmen as well. So I think it's true that these data centers will bring many construction-related jobs. They'll bring high-tech engineering and management jobs. And I am proudly going to be supporting this data center bill in voting yes. And I will hand it back to my Senator Rest, my colleague.
We will now go to any amendments. The amendment that I'm aware of, I'm now calling... Any amendments. Senator, the Secretary will give the bill its third reading.
House File Number 16, a bill for an act relating to data centers modifying various environmental and energy regulatory requirements governing data centers.
Third reading. Senator Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I was significantly involved in data center work, and it's with a lot of frustration to see a lot of really negative policies that are in this final package that we see here today. Mr. President, I've been working on... There's a proposal that's supposed to be coming to my district, and I'm going to back up here and fight for and defend my district a little bit, because in the city of Becker, where we've been dealing with fallout and the economic and local impact of closing the Sherco plants, we've been dealing with the planning and the preparation for this for about 10 years. That plant itself is contributing over 60% of the local revenue to the city, over a quarter of the entire budget for the school district in that area, going to leave sizable holes when this resource, due to the company policy and due to state-mandated policy, is going away. And I have a community that keeps trying to come up with new solutions that's going to help backfill the loss of that revenue, and we keep getting turned around and attacked and getting replacement projects shut down by people in Minneapolis and St. Paul that probably have never even been out to my district or seen the plan or proposal or talked to the local officials and the community to know what the needs are. But we keep getting dictated, nope, you can't do that, and you can't do that. And first, it was the gas plant plan that was going there, and then that got shut down. And then there have been multiple iterations of these data centers, and the current status of the one that I've been trying to work on is up in the air and undetermined at this point. And it's very frustrating to keep fighting for my district and my community and to have bad policy decisions here in St. Paul continue to inflict more harm upon prior harm in my district. And so I was involved with one simple piece of data center legislation early on, and that was a little bit of regulatory relief with the certificate of need process before the Public Utilities Commission. And it got bipartisan support in two different committees, and it was a key and valuable piece that needed to be in this package. And unfortunately, I was not even consulted in the working group or the assembly of this bill until hearing a few little pieces at the very end, but that part got left out. And there's only really one piece that the stakeholders are needing to have, that they're insisting they have to have in here, and that's the extensions of certain of these credits for a period of 35 years in there. And in exchange for that is a whole bunch of bad policy that's coming alongside of it. It's including the new fund whereby the policy that's being set today is, oh, you can come and do business in our state at the cost of millions of dollars per year for the pleasure of doing business in the state of Minnesota. That's not how we operate. It's not how we should be operating, and it's a dangerous precedent, in my view, to keep going down this path. And I know the number that's in here is a lot smaller than what original proposals were, but this is not the way that we should be treating companies that are here providing the taxpayer, or the property tax funds that's going to replace some key infrastructure and key operational needs in places like my local city and my local school district. There's a vast amount of new regulations in here, basically from inception all the way through the project and proposals. Greatly expands on what is already a significant regulatory burden in the state of Minnesota. The ones that are coming in already have a number of high-level, key regulatory pieces when it comes to the air, when it comes to any water use, when it comes to siting. There's already a significant number of regulations that goes, that they go through, and this bill is greatly expanding and adding on to that burden. There's new water regulations, and you hear the proponents behind me that are explaining it, like this is the first-ever water regulation we've ever imposed on anything in the state of Minnesota, that it's been just a free-for-all up to this point, which is simply not true. We've had very significant water protections and water regulations that have already been in place for a long time. And we had a whole bunch of wild and outlandish accusations on this piece in some of the hearings that we went through with claims of what these projects were potentially doing and accusations of how much they were going to be polluting, which was nowhere near, even in the ballpark, of what the actual truth was. There's new tariffs that are in here. There's just a whole host of added and new regulations in exchange for this one tax credit extension. That is what all the stakeholders are here pushing for. Oh, and finally, this prevailing wage. We've been talking amongst my colleagues. I cannot come up with one prior example where we are now instituting a prevailing wage requirement on solely privately-funded companies. I know there are sometimes hooks for when you're doing government projects, or you're getting state funding, or state grants, or anything like this. This is the first requirement that I'm aware of, unless I'm missing one, that is going to be the first requirement for a complete and total private company to have a mandate on prevailing wage. Now, I have no problem with the companies that choose to adopt that and choose to utilize it, and many companies do, and many companies are providing an excellent service through the workers that they're giving these jobs to and the opportunities that they are providing. But that's what I want it to be, a choice, and not a government mandate. And it's highly frustrating that with all of this, I lobbied hard in these last hours as this bill was getting together to try to get my one little regulatory piece added to this entire laundry list that I just read out. And the thing that started this whole process on the data centers is left out on the outside and not included in this provision. And that's disappointing. And the stakeholders that are out that have been working to get this in still need that regulatory relief. And I'm going to hold them to their commitment that we're going to keep working and trying to fight for that piece again, because it's going to be important. If we truly want to have the door open for having data centers in our community, then we have to have some regulatory certainty and a reasonable timeframe in place to allow these to come into play. The final point I want to make is, the talk is, want to make sure that we're on the map for data centers and we're open for business and that they choose us. Minnesota is already at a very severe regulatory disadvantage, especially among our neighboring states and in this region. And that's going to be getting worse. And I had my legislative assistant helped compile information about what we're up against in the local areas. Our neighbors in Wisconsin have permanent sales tax exemptions that they just passed in 2023. Iowa has a permanent exemption in their law. North Dakota has a permanent exemption in their law. The only one that is similar to Minnesota that does have some higher requirements is South Dakota, but the benefits there are offset because of the lack of a whole host of other taxes, which is what has made South Dakota a very business-friendly state. There's a large number of states that have 20-plus-year extensions, including Michigan, Missouri, Nebraska, Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and throughout the country. And so with what's being added in this bill and then the repeal of the sales tax on electricity coming in the tax bill, that's driving Minnesota further in the wrong direction. coming in the tax bill, that's driving Minnesota further in the wrong direction of not being a regulatory-friendly state. And frankly, even with this exemption that's pushed into place, if I'm a large data center provider and I look at what I have to jump through to get here in Minnesota, and I look at what the opportunities could be in my neighboring state, why would anyone come and put these types of investments and these types of involvement in our communities? We've been going in the wrong direction. And it's unfortunate that the agreement that came out of the, was, my understanding, pushed by the administration to undo the sales tax exemption on the sale of electricity just completely blew up the entire data center piece that we've been trying to work on so significantly. And that's apparently is the foundation for then what the rest of this bad bill has been based on. And instead of going back to the drawing board and fixing that part like we did with other agreements that got a lot of backlash, like the transportation bill and so forth, everyone pretty much decided as soon as that agreement came out, oh, the ship has sailed on this, we're going to just stick with it, and we're going to find other areas to try to wallpaper over the damage that we're doing here in this area. So I'm here to continue to fight for not only my community that is needing infrastructure projects to backfill some of the big economic losses we're going to incur, but I also want to fight for all Minnesota to make sure that we are a competitive state in our regulatory environment, and we simply are not accomplishing that here with this bill. I hope to continue to work with Senator Friends and others. It's unfortunate that a lot of provisions that he's previously supported are once again being rejected, and this is not the way that we should be doing business nor negotiating these types of deals behind closed doors for Minnesota. I'm glad that the stakeholders out there are going to get this tax credit extension out for 35 years, and if that was just the standalone piece in this bill, I sure as heck would be supporting that part. But all this other piece, that's, all these other pieces that are in here outweigh that, in my view. It's moving us in the wrong direction, and I want us to fight for a better deal for the state of Minnesota. I'm urging a no vote on this bill.
Senator Marty.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree with Senator Matthews on one thing, and I'll urge no vote on the bill. I have a lot of disagreements with other things he said. I'll start by pointing out that these are some of the wealthiest companies in the world. There are plenty of data centers in Minnesota that will continue to be, but when we're talking about the billion-dollar ones, those are some of the wealthiest companies in the world, and we are now talking about giving them tax credits for 52 more years. That's a long time into the future, and this, when this tax credits for, the sales tax exemptions for these data centers were put in place 12, 15 years ago, projection was $5 million a year. We're now over $100 million a year, and while we're taking off the electric portion of it, it is growing very fast. We get a couple of these billion-dollar facilities in the state, and all of a sudden, our subsidies are going to hundreds of millions a year. These are big, very wealthy companies. They can afford to put these in, they will put them in, but we don't need to subsidize them. Other Minnesota businesses are paying sales tax on electricity and on software and other things, and your constituents are paying taxes on these things, but we're going to cut them out of it because they're big. And if we were doing that in exchange for some really good regulation, really good protection for our communities, that would be good, and I don't want to diminish what Senator Friends and Senator Johnson Stewart have been working on getting. They've gotten some concessions that are good. But we have a problem here where, look at what Farmington, look what Apple Valley has done with the non-disclosure agreements. People in the communities can't find out what's going on until they virtually ink the contracts. The secrecy of these deals is against Minnesota's commitment to Data Practices Act. I think these non-disclosure agreements should not be allowed in any of these projects where we're giving out these large tax breaks. And then in terms of the water and electricity use, these are huge consumers of, some more in the electricity end, some more in the water for cooling end, some in between. But the state, we keep hearing, oh, the agencies are okay with this, and they're good environmental protection agencies. Don't want to disappoint people too much, but the water provisions in here are pretty close to what we have in existing regulations, and we haven't done a good job with it. Some correspondence I had with the Commissioner of the DNR 10 years ago, when Offit Potato, the supplier for McDonald's french fries nationally, was putting in, they had 57 different water permits they were doing central Minnesota. The DNR, well, they were being pushed to do an EAW on this. In the end, they decided, we don't need to do that. We'll do a memorandum of understanding, which the state paid for instead of the permit seeker. Bad decision for the taxpayers, but the DNR decided to do that. In their memorandum of understanding, they said the reason they wanted to do this memorandum was, quote, "The Minnesota DNR believes there may be potential for significant environmental effects from this," et cetera. So I wrote them saying, isn't that significant potential for environmental effects? The language that triggers an EAW where you have to do one? Two weeks later, three weeks later, they said, no, we're not going to do one, because they didn't see significant risk of environmental impact. The agencies don't do their job necessarily to enforce the law now, so we can't say we have some of the strictest laws in the country. This doesn't really crank down on that. Why does that matter? Why did I tell the story of Offit Potatoes? Because in 2023, New York Times did an article on a four-part investigative series on the water crisis around the country. One of the four-part series was strictly about that case, "Big Farms and Flawless Fries Are Gulping Water in the Land of 10,000 Lakes." State known for its 10,000 lakes, many people could do little except for hope for rain. This is in 2021. One older woman outside Warren said the only way she could get water into, after her own well went dry, was to drive her riding mower to her neighbor's house to fill water bottles. The DNR decided not to do an EAW because, well, you know, there's lots of little things, it's too much hassle. 10 years later, big story about the crisis of water shortage in Minnesota farm communities. It's something that we could have prevented if we do the right work on these environmental standards. The EAW/EIS process is not this huge, terrible process to gum up the works of things. It's designed to take a look at all the impacts, the noise, the water consumption, the energy consumption, all the process. That's the whole point of the EAW/EIS process. That's the point of it, saying, well, we've got some protections in here, but not that. If we're putting $2 billion facilities in the state, maybe the least we can do is go through our environmental process. I understand these create good jobs. You hear from the chamber, you hear from building trades that they like these. I want to help us create jobs too. I think we have a lot of other things we could use building trades to be building, a lot of infrastructure in the state we need. And frankly, every time some company comes calling and saying, oh, you give us more money and we'll create more jobs. Promises of jobs aren't always as great as they seem, and the commitment of the taxpayers is a lot greater than it should be, because remember, the rest of our constituents don't get these tax breaks. In 52 years of tax breaks here on some of the wealthiest companies in the world is more than we should do at this time. Urge rejecting the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to respond to Senator Matthews' comments and to assure the body that the Data Center Coalition has fully endorsed this bill and the provisions that are in it. I do share his disappointment that the work that he has done on the, in this area was not recognized, but as we know on so many other things, we have to deal with the other body. And so this is what, this bill and this proposal is where we are now. But I'll go back to a comment that I made right from the beginning. This is indeed the beginning of how we are going to deal with a modern Minnesota, a modern Minnesota that we should be embracing in our agricultural processes and policies, in transportation, that Senator Dibble worked so hard for, and the way in which we embrace modern education in Minnesota. And we should be working toward that, understanding the age that we are eager to be in control of. And I foresee that we will have many, many opportunities to guide this industry in Minnesota and to be, in my mind, in charge of it, but be grateful that we do indeed have these jobs coming to Minnesota, more than just the 42 smaller data centers we have now. And in terms of people, companies running to here, there hasn't been a data center certified in Minnesota for the last, for the last three years. And for some of you, maybe that is a good thing. I am not of that opinion. I do think we need to be moving forward. We need to be in control of it, and Johnson, Senator Johnson Stewart indicated all of the controls that are coming, and some of them, of course, Senator Matthews really objects to. But I see environmentalists and modern environmental policy, which changes all the time because of the science that accompanies it, will be there to guide us, to help us make those moral decisions about how artificial intelligence will benefit, maybe surpass natural intelligence, but not the ability to make judgments, never the ability to make judgments. And I believe that this bill will really have us going in the right direction, which is not back to the 20th century or to the 19th century for that matter, where that industrial age was handled disastrously. That does not need to be the case with what we are experiencing in Minnesota and in the country and across the world. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think it's important for us to talk about why we're here today, even talking about this bill. And what this bill before the body is attempting to do is to mitigate the damage that is coming in the tax bill to Minnesota's ability to be competitive with data centers. And, Mr. President, I'm glad that Senator Rest distributed a list of the data centers that will be hit by the forthcoming tax increases. And if you look at the list, Mr. President, most of these are not big tech companies. Most of these are Minnesota homegrown companies that employ thousands of our neighbors that have made major investments in the state. And in the upcoming tax bill, the tax increase will be in excess of $100 million over four years. So while this, the bill in front of the body is far from a perfect solution and needs continued work, it will help mitigate the damage of this increased tax. And that's why, Mr. President, I'll be voting for the bill. It's going to help ease the tax burden on these Minnesota companies that have invested in our state. It's also going to help give Minnesota a chance to hopefully be competitive and take advantage of the forthcoming data center boom, and that means jobs for Minnesotans. That means a greater tax base for Minnesota schools and our communities, and it means an ability to participate in the economy of the future. And so while there are many shortcomings in this bill and more work to be done, I would ask that members support this bill to lower the tax impact that's coming and to help keep Minnesota competitive when it comes to these investments.
Senator McWait.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's really important that we separate out what we have currently in Minnesota and what is coming. The list that is on your desk of all the data centers that we have, they're small. There's one, if you drive west on 494, OATI, it's the size of a modest office building. It's not big. I represent the city of Rosemount. There is an incredibly large, it's like multiple housing developments, large, Meta, Facebook data center coming there. The reason why we need different regulations today than we did even five years ago is because Lando Lakes didn't build their data center to mine our data, make AI porn of children, and put kids in the metaverse. They did it for AgriTech, right? Best Buy didn't build their data center to insert dynamic pricing so that they can charge me one thing and you, Mr. President, a different thing on the same day in the same store, because they can get more money out of you than they can get out of me. General Mills didn't build a data center so they could build a neural network throughout the country to create AI superintelligence and then lock down their data center like a military base and put light pollution into your windows and run diesel generators next to your house. That's not why General Mills built a data center. The regulations that we have in law right now for the current data centers are fine, because none of these companies build data centers specifically only for data, our data. That's not their primary purpose of their company. We are talking about the largest corporations in the entire world that are run by the wealthiest people in the entire world, who have run roughshod over society, showing absolute, complete disregard for literal humanity. And they're coming into the state and look, we need tax breaks, $230 million in tax breaks. Otherwise, we can't come there, these billionaires, who make more in an hour than some of these tax breaks even amount to, so that we can mine your data and sell you AI and surpass all your jobs. I have no problem with data centers and their concept. They are great jobs. They're great for the companies who use them to do their business, but when their business is data, it is dangerous. AI is predicted to cost Minnesota 500,000 jobs. That is 17% of the workforce. We're going to give tax breaks to Amazon to decimate more of our workforce? We're going to give tax breaks to Meta to continue to steal elections and confuse people about literally what's happening in their society, trick people with AI into thinking things happen that didn't? Frances Haugen, who was this Facebook whistleblower, one of the things she said to me when she came here, she said, you know how they have chemical restraints that they use for people who might be in nursing homes? You should add language to law about digital restraints, because Meta's plan for the future is to put kids in the metaverse and use digital restraints to overcome the teacher shortage. Digital restraints, Meta, in my backyard, and they want tax breaks to do it. This bill doesn't even come close to doing what we need it to do. These are the largest corporations in the entire world who have no care in the world for unions or workers or the communities that they're building in. These are not Minnesota companies that are using tech to do their business. Their whole business is tech and ruling the world and ruling us, and now they're asking us for tax breaks to do it. It is unconscionable. The $230 million estimated tax break that these data centers are getting in the next few years is almost the exact amount of money that we have to cut from special education. few years is almost the exact amount of money that we have to cut from special education. People see this and they feel it. When we give mega corporations tax breaks and take away their services for kids with disabilities, they feel that. The $60 million that we will raise in the next bill is nothing. And the money that the data centers are going to give to weatherization, I'm sure they're laughing at how cute it is because they are going to make so much money off of our data in our communities where we will all pay the price. I'm going to urge members to vote no, and we can do a lot more. If these companies weren't so reckless, if these companies weren't literally working to destroy pretty much everything we love in society, I would have all the confidence in the world that they would come in and treat our communities nicely and not destroy our water pressure and put dust particles all over and noise pollute and light pollute into our homes and then use the data centers to do things harmful. I don't trust them. These companies, I trust them just fine. That is not the world we are in anymore. Members, this bill does not do near enough, and I urge a no vote.
Senator Hosschow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Think about the U.S. Bank Stadium project. I mean, I wasn't in the legislature at the time that we provided incentives for that project, but that was a historic project that took the intention of the entire legislature for that one project in Minneapolis. And we see the economic benefits of that project. One of these data centers is the size of U.S. Bank Stadium, larger than the bonding bill that we will pass later today. Think about that. Think about the economic impact that these data centers bring to Minnesota. That's thousands of construction jobs, hundreds of long-term jobs for each one of these data centers. That's not even mentioning the local community benefits that come from the local sales tax and benefits that local communities get from these data centers. Transformative when you consider the school districts and local city benefits that they will get from these data centers. And Minnesota is not an island, folks. These data centers are being built across the country. Just today, it was announced that Amazon is building $20 billion, that's 20 billion with a B, dollars in data centers in their state. That's 20 U.S. Bank stadiums from one company making investments in a Great Lakes state that is very comparable to Minnesota. We should want that here in Minnesota where we have high labor standards and high environmental standards. This is common sense. And Senator Rasmussen, you know, brings up a good point, that we're doing this because of what's in the tax bill. But I think that's actually really important. We have members of the body saying that they don't want to pass this because it's not perfect. That's not a reason not to support this. If you support investments from data centers, then you should support this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members, I've been struggling with this bill since I saw the details of it. You know, we're fixing a problem that didn't exist until this special session, until the leaders got a hold of this tax bill. These, as we've mentioned, are primarily local companies. These are the Fortune 500 companies that we often talk about. Republicans and Democrats hold these up as why we are a great state to do business. And here we are fixing a problem because we broke the promises that we made in the tax bill. 14 years ago, we passed the first data center incentives. Back in 2023, when this body was under DFL control, we expanded those incentives. We made those promises. And we're here today because there's a move to break those promises. Now, this bill comes close to making up for the damage that was done in the tax bill, but I share a lot of Senator Matthews' concerns about all the other provisions that are being I don't know that this is a good bill, but, Mr. President, it's better than the alternative. And the alternative is to allow these incentives to be rescinded and to break our promise. Even with passing this bill, Mr. President, why would any company trust us to stand behind our word when we offer incentives again? I don't know. But I do know that we have 42 data centers on this list that we've made a promise to, and we have an obligation to stand up to that commitment. Thank you.
Senator Johnson, and then we're going to Senator Rest to end the bill, before we vote, I should say. Senator Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The bill that we have before us is simply a bill that, as Senator Rest or Rasmussen has said, is a bill that came together as a response to issues that came up during the special session, prep up to the special session. It's bipartisan bill. It's a bill that industry, labor, and a number of organizations have come together to get this language, compromise language. And I am fully supportive of the bill moving forward. I know it's not exactly what we'd want to pass if we had control of it, but this is a bill that I think that will benefit the industry and benefit the state going forward. So I encourage a green vote.
The last voice we'll hear before we vote will be that of Senator Rest. Senator Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Senator Johnson, and thank you, everyone who has pointed out that this is not a perfect bill. I will once again reiterate that this is the beginning of how we can bring a new industrial age that is one that we are going to control and move forward on. And I will remind us once again that the data center coalition, which involves many, many special interest groups that are devoted to the future of this state, supported. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
The secretary will take the role on final passes of House File 16. Senator Bowden, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes no.
Senator Mohammed votes no.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator Port votes no.
Senator Port votes no.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umum Verbatim votes no.
Senator Umum Verbatim votes no.
And Senator Fatae votes no.
And Senator Fatae votes no. Senator Zenzinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Lang votes aye.
And Senator Lang votes aye. Senator Carlson, are you voting? All senators having voted, who desires a vote? The secretary will close the roll. There being 40 ayes and 26 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Remaining under motions and resolutions, we revert to the Third Order of Business messages from the House. The secretary will read the message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to announce the passage by the House of the following House file herewith transmitted, House File Number 9. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
Members, no action is required. The next order of business is the Fourth Order of Business, First Reading of House Bills.
House File Number 9, a bill for an act relating to taxation, modifying individual income and corporate franchise taxes, property taxes, sales and use taxes, et cetera.
The House file has been given its first reading. Remaining on motions and resolutions, I am now going to call on Senator Murphy for motions.
Mr. President, I move that an urgency be declared within the meaning of Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of Minnesota with respect to House File 9, and that the rules of the Senate be so far suspended as to give House File 9 its second and third reading and place it on its final passage, and I ask for a roll call.
Roll call requested, roll call granted. The secretary will take the role on the motion to suspend the rules. Senator Bowden, for those who are going to vote pursuant to Rule 40.7, but you need more time. Senator Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umum Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umum Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fatae votes aye.
And Senator Fatae votes aye. Senator Zenzinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Drazkowski votes no.
Senator Drazkowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
And I'm waiting on two. Mr. President.
Senator Zenzinski.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye. All senators having voted, who desires a vote? The secretary will close the roll. There being 46 ayes and 20 nays, the motion to suspend the rules prevails. The secretary will give the House file its second reading.
House File Number 9.
The House file has been given its second reading. I am now going to call on the author of the bill to explain the bill. That would be Senator Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trying to read the number of Senate file.
Is...
There you go. House file, that's what I'm asking for. House File Number 9, thank you very much, is the omnibus tax bill. The major tax provisions in this bill come from the leaders agreement that did not include the Senate Republican Caucus. And because of that, I am not anticipating any Republican voters for the bill. But I would like to, and they are, and sometimes it's amazing that you can have a quote "prop" that does exactly what you hope it will do. And that is by handing out the list of the 42 data centers that we have, we are showing what the impact, who is going to pay the price for the repeal of the electricity sales tax exemption, and it is 42 Minnesota companies. We could have had, we could have had a bill that had, that taxed all of those multinational corporations where they live. In the bill that we heard in the Tax Committee that taxed the owners of social media companies, but we didn't do that. The leaders agreement, for whatever reason, rejected that notion of where not one single Minnesotan, and that, I think, includes those that are disputing the issues around the costs of advertising, but not one Minnesota company would have paid those. But now they do, and that's part of the agreement. Whether I support it or you support it, that particular item, that's part of it. Also, another part of the leaders agreement that I don't agree with, but that's here and that I accept, is the tax on cannabis that went from 10% to 15%, a tax on, that's going to definitely be passed on to consumers, and not only individuals, but the THC products that are sold in liquor stores. And what does that do? Well, when a price gets high, you look for a black market. And that might, in some instances, be a false assumption, but I don't believe it is here. So we're going to risk, and I might sound like I'm talking against the bill, but I'm going to be voting for it because it is part of the leaders agreement that my caucus and my leader and the leaders in the House thought was the best way to go. But I don't like that tax, that increase in tax on cannabis either. And what did we get for that? We did indeed get an agreement to move forward on the data centers, except for the fact that the bill that we just passed was going to be determined by legislators and by the special interests that we work with, we work with every day. And so that was one piece of that puzzle. In addition, the leaders agreement brought a benefit through $80 million over the four years in refundable R. the four years in refundable R and D credits, which are available both to individuals as well as corporate corporations. And by it being a refundable credit, it could mean, for example, although it's used by multinational corporations too and their spinoffs, but nevertheless, for a medical device company, for example, that before it becomes profitable in any way, may spend seven, eight, nine years developing a patent for their device that we, and meanwhile, they're running annually an NOL. Well, this would, this would be a stopgap measure as they seek to get their patents and become profitable. But is it indeed used by multinational corporations? The answer is yes. We had quite a debate about whether it should be a refundable credit or a non-refundable credit. And by the way, those of you who have spent rightly criticizing, because I share that criticism, of secrecy, people want to call it private meetings, but they're secret, and you know they're secret, and we don't do that in the main, in the Tax Committee, and we didn't do it in our Tax Working Group either. And if you think people are nasty in public meetings, well, just imagine how nasty they are to one another in the so-called secret meetings. It's almost the same. But those were the, that was the Leaders Agreement. We tried to do a number of other things that we thought embraced modern tax, modern tax policy, modern tax policy, and we fell short there too. But in this bill, there are provisions by twenty-four of you, besides myself, on the DFL side, Gustafson, Klein, Putnam, Mohammed, Housechild, Dibble, Jeong, Umu Verbatim, Senator Pa, Senator Hoffman, Senator Swazinski, Senator Mann, Senator Kupac, Senator Westland, Senator Pappas, and seven members of the Republican Party, Senator Weber, Senator Drazkowski, and all of these people I'm naming now, there are going to be no votes in the bill, but their bills are in here. Senator Weber, Senator Drazkowski, Senator Farnsworth, Senator Grunhagen, Senator Bosch, Senator Lindbergh, and Senator Dames. What we missed out on was getting in law local sales tax reforms, which we have been working on for two and a half years. We missed out on a proposal from the Governor to expand the sales tax base and lower the rate. We missed out on setting the tax structure in place for helium. We missed out on modernizing general TIF law with regard to definition of plight. We missed out on helping two hospitals in Hennepin County, HCMC and North Memorial, which is in my district, with repurposing the sales tax for, that is currently being collected, paying for the Twins Stadium. We missed out on significant SAF policy, sustainable aviation fuel policy. We did get the carryover, so it is, it will still be there, but we missed out on the policy. For whatever reason, I don't know, because all along this session, we were told that the SAF policy being negotiated over and over again, just like some of the terms in the Data Center Bill, was solid. And we missed out on an opportunity to bring major sporting events to Minnesota through the Professional Golf Association. We did a number of, I would call, minor, but good provisions, and I, if you had one in here particularly anxious are your cities with regard to tax increment financing, but there are even smaller, there are even smaller provisions, and I held a contest, some of you know about that, of which ones, which ones are the really neatest ones here? And the contestants are two people, two of the contestants are people who will vote against the bill. Senator Drazkowski, who became the woke flower child of the Senate Tax Committee by his putting together with Senator Putnam's provisions on market farming and floriculture. That's one. A second one is Senator Farnsworth, whose provisions, very tender-hearted provisions about allowing a city or town to raise their levy in order to pay for their city ban. And if that doesn't speak well about the culture of rural Minnesota, I don't know, I don't know what does. And then Senator Housechild was also a contestant, because he exemplified the Iron Range way of getting a provision in the bill. And it had to do with brewers having only to make a report once a year. Well, there was a bill introduced, but it didn't get a herring. It just got put in the tax bill. Now, that is quintessential Iron Range behavior. And then the fourth contestant was myself, having to do with the Tax Expenditure Review Commission. The Senate has, as long as I've been here, resisted a provision in law that requires purpose statements to any bill or provision that is adopted. Well, we got rid of the word "purpose," but the House came back now with preferred language, which was, which was objective, and then inserted, which I called silly, at kindness, out of kindness, but nevertheless, requiring the Chairs of the House of Representatives and Senate Committees on Taxes to submit to the Tax Expenditure Review Commission, themselves having to do a statement of objectives. Well, I accepted it into the bill, but I can tell you right now, I am never going to do that. I will not comply with that provision, and neither will any other Senate Tax Chair, whoever they may be. So that's what this bill is. It is the Leaders Agreement on the Tax Increases, on the R and D Credit Refundability, and all kinds of provisions that you all brought before us to benefit your cities, your communities, and the way in which we live in Minnesota. Mr. President, I would ask for a green vote.
We are now on amendments, and I will start with Senator Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer the A1 Amendment.
Senator Matthews offers the A1 Amendment. The secretary will report the A1 Amendment.
Senator Matthews moves to amend House File Number Nine as follows, page forty-one, delete section four. This is the A1 Amendment.
Senator Matthews, to your A1 Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could not have been set up better on the introduction to this amendment, because this is going to correct one of the egregious parts of this bill. This is going to restore the sales tax on the sales of electricity, the exemption that's in current law. This part should never have been agreed to. It was wrong from the start. It's going to do bad things for Minnesota, and there's a whole, long list of Minnesota companies it's going to be impacting, as well as more out into the future. And this is our chance to rectify that. We should adopt this amendment and not inflict that harm on Minnesotans. Ask for a roll call and ask for members to support the amendment.
Roll call requested, roll call granted. Senator Rest to the A1 Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would urge members to vote no. As Senator Rasmussen pointed out, what we were dealing with also in the Data Centers Bill was mitigation for, in the twenty thirty-five plus forty years, provisions for extending the sales tax exemptions that remained against the hundred and thirty-eight million dollars over four years for the loss of the sales tax exemption. So as I mentioned, this is not my way of raising taxes, but it was the way in which the three leaders and the Governor came to resolution between the two bodies of the way to go. And equally onerous for some, again, and even more expensive, is the increase on cannabis. And, Mr. President, a deal's a deal, and you may not think it's a good deal, but I urge you to vote no.
Any other discussion on the A1 before I go back to the author of the amendment before we vote? Send no other comments. Senator, all right, no comments from him. The secretary will take the roll on the A1 Matthews Amendment. Senator Bowden, for those voting pursuant to Rule Forty Point Seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes no.
Senator Mohammed votes no.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator McEwen votes no.
Senator Port votes no.
Senator Port votes no.
Senator Klein votes no.
Senator Klein votes no.
Senator Dibble votes no.
Senator Dibble votes no.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes no.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes no.
And Senator Fateh votes no.
And Senator Fateh votes no. Senator Juzinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule Forty Point Seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
And thank you, Mr. President. Senator Lang votes aye.
Senator Juzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Pratt votes aye.
Senator Pratt votes aye. All members having voted, who desires a vote? The secretary will close the roll. There being thirty-one ayes and thirty-four noes, the A1 Matthews Amendment is not adopted. The secretary will give the bill its third reading.
House File Number Nine, A Bill for an Act Relating to Taxation: Modifying Individual Income and Corporate Franchise Taxes, Property Taxes, Sales and Use Taxes, Excise Taxes, Et Cetera.
Senator Weber.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Chair Rest for the inclusion that she had in her committee to include me in the Tax Working Group, and actually, even when it got to a point where the Chairs met, were meeting only with the Commissioner, she was gracious enough to include me in one or two of those meetings as well, before I had to return home to attend to business. And I think that the relationship that Senator Rest and I have had is, has been one that of mutual respect and cooperation, and I thank her for the efforts that she has made in that regard. I want to thank also our staff, our nonpartisan staff, Nora Pollak, Eric Sylvia, Casey Mumm, who have done a tremendous job during this session, as well as Rachel Johnson. I wish to thank Mitch, Kevin, and Krista from the DFL staff, as well as my researcher, Dan Mickelberg, and my LA, Ryan Thornton. There are a number of good provisions, because the reason that we have a number of good provisions, and there are fairly minor many of them, but the reason we have them is because Senator Rest took it upon herself to contact the Governor, who had actually taken much of the Working Group's work and thrown it off the table during the leadership meeting, and actually told the leaders they had to come back and finish their work. And fortunately, they did, and so TIF provisions, many other provisions that were authored by many of us on both sides of the aisle, wound up, that having made it through the Tax Working Group, wound up in the bill. But at the end of the day, this is a major tax increase represented by this bill. Whether we're talking about the elimination of the sales tax credit for electricity sold to our data centers, whether we're talking about the cannabis tax, or the denial of cannabis tax sharing with our counties and a couple of other things, it is a major tax increase. A tax increase, quite frankly, Mr. President, that we didn't have to have had there been proper management of the surplus that we had experienced the previous two years. And so with that, I regret that I cannot support the tax bill this year. Obviously, by her comments, Senator Rest certainly recognizes that, but still, I thank her for the efforts that she has made towards putting together a tax bill this year. And with that, Mr. President, I encourage my members to vote no on this tax bill.
Members, any other discussion before we go to the author of the bill and vote for final passage? Send on Senator Rest, you will get the last words. Senator Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. My last words will be also my thank yous, certainly to the Working Group members, Senators Weber, Dibble, Putnam, Housechild, Clark, for the members of Senate Councils, Nora Pollak, Eric Sylvia, excuse me, Casey Munn, Raisel Johnson, Olivia Seaberson, our pages, Gillian Churney, Mitchell Winter, and Sidney Tiffany, our interns, Grant Hayden, Madeline Michael, and Jackie Mondugano, and our staff, Krista Broden, Dan Mickelberg, Ryan Thornton, and my own staff, Kevin Montressor, and Mitch Bergren. I also want to express my appreciation for the... I also want to express my appreciation for the, all the sergeant-at-arms that keep us safe in Room 15, as well as members of Capitol Security. And personally, and on behalf of my family, Alphonse Boudreau.
The Secretary will take the roll on final passage of House File 9. Senator Boden, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye. Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes no.
Senator Abler votes no.
Senator Deames votes no.
Senator Deames votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Lang votes no.
And Senator Lang votes no. All senators having voted who desires a vote. The Secretary will close the roll. There being 34 ayes and 32 nos, the bill is passed and is titled agreed to.
Mr. President, I apologize. Senator Pratt voted no. My mistake.
We can just record it. Senator Pratt votes no.
Thank you.
Members, just with that addition, it is still 34 ayes and 33 nos. The bill is passed and is titled agreed to. Remaining on motions and resolutions, we'll revert to the Third Order of Business. Messages from the House, the Secretary will read the message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to announce the passage by the House, the following House File herewith transmitted, House File Number 17. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
Members, no action is required. The next order of business is the Fourth Order of Business, first reading of House bills. The Secretary will give the bill its first reading.
House File Number 17, a bill for an act relating to capital investment, authorizing spending to acquire and better land and buildings, and for other improvements of a capital nature.
The House file has been given its first reading. Remaining on motions and resolutions, I'm now going to call on Senator Murphy for motion.
Mr. President, I move that an urgency be declared within the meaning of Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of Minnesota with respect to House File Number 17, and that the rules of the Senate be so far suspended, as to give House File 17 its second and third reading and be placed on its final passage, and I request a roll call.
Roll call requested, roll call granted. The Secretary will take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules. Senator Boden, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye.
Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
And thank you, Mr. President. Senator Pratt votes no.
All senators having voted who desires a vote, the Secretary will close the roll. There being 45 ayes and 21 nos, the motion to suspend the rules is adopted and prevails. The Secretary will give the House file its second reading.
House File Number 17.
The House file has been given its second reading. I am now calling on the author of the bill to explain the bill. That would be Senator Pappas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank some people. I'd like to thank the members of the work group, Senator Karen Housley, Ann Johnson Stewart, and Jordan Rasmussen. I'd like to thank my Vice Chair, Susan Paugh, and I'd like to thank the members of my committee that toured with me, John Jazinski, Scott Dibble, Michael Kuhn, Nick, Mick, Friends, Carla Nelson, Zainab Mohammed, Eric Pratt, and Suzanne. I'd like to thank all the committee staff and the Senate staff, Jack Fisher, Maryam Arab, Angelique McDonald, Damian Moore, Dan Mickelberg, Olivia Kloster, Stephanie James, and Hannah Grunwald-Noldner. Other important people that worked on these bills, Jenny Nash, the House Administrator, Rachel Carlson, my former CA and now in Senate leadership, certainly Emmett Hedon from the Governor's Office, the MMB Commissioner, Erin Campbell, Matty Kennedy, and Eric Anderson from MMB, and Jeff Case from the Revisers Office, who put it all together. All the State Agency staff who put time into the bill, and all the advocates who've written, called, and met with lawmakers along with the process. Members, House File 17 is a very, very skinny cash bill, only $10.5 million, divided between the House, the Senate, the GOP, the DFL. I just want to point out two major projects. One is the $3.5 million for First District, the dairy operation, very important to the dairy industry in southern Minnesota, and this goes for their wastewater facility in Litchfield. And also, a new program for local public housing, $2.439 million, that will help jumpstart some public housing run by local government in Washington County and Olmsted. And there should be, I do not see the spreadsheets, but I assume that they would be, they're coming. But by the time we vote, you'll see the spreadsheet after we voted. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Send no amendments at the desk. The Secretary will give the bill its third reading.
House File Number 17, a bill for an act relating to capital investment, authorizing spending to acquire and better land and buildings, and for other improvements of a capital nature with certain conditions.
Third reading. Any other discussion? Senator Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would Senator Pappas yield for a question?
Senator Pappas, will you yield? She will yield. Senator Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Senator Pappas. This First District Association Dairy Cooperative, is that a private for-profit entity?
Senator Pappas, to the question.
Yes.
Senator Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, and thank you, Senator Pappas, for that response. I'm struggling to understand why it's appropriate to include this. I know that this is a cash bill, so I think technically it isn't against the rules, but I'm struggling to find the appropriateness of including a private for-profit business cooperative, giving them $3.5 million of taxpayer monies. I don't know if there's any explanation. Feel free to, I'm not asking you to yield, but I'm just struggling with why that's appropriateness in this bill.
Any other discussion? He didn't ask you to yield unless you want to speak. Senator Pappas.
Senator Kuhn, did you ask me to yield? Did you want me to respond to that? Yes, all right. I would say that in, you know, in the jobs bill, there are several times there are appropriations to entities like NDAs that do provide loans and grants to local businesses, so that's one example. Another example is the robotic and technical training facility in St. Paul. There was a grant to the Ford Motor Company for that. And there also was funding to central healthcare systems for a wellness center in Long Prairie. So we do have examples of when we've done that.
The final comments will be from, send none. The Secretary will take the roll on final passage of House File 17. Members, please vote. I'm calling on Senator Boden, for those who are voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye. Senator Rest, are you voting? Any other votes? Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Deames votes no.
Senator Deames votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes yes.
Senator Lang votes yes.
And thank you, Mr. President. Senator Pratt votes no.
And Senator Pratt votes no. All members having voted who desires a vote, the Secretary will close the roll. There being 37 ayes and 30 nos, the bill is passed and is titled agreed to. Remaining on the motions and resolutions, we revert to the Third Order of Business. Messages from the House, the Secretary will read the message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to announce the passage by the House, the following House File herewith transmitted, House File Number 18. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
No action is required, members. The next order of business is the Fourth Order of Business, first reading of House bills. The Secretary will give the bill its first reading.
House File Number 18, a bill for an act relating to capital investment, authorizing spending to acquire and better land and buildings, and for other improvements of a capital nature.
The House file has been given its first reading. Remaining under, excuse me, remaining on motions and resolutions, I will now call on Senator Murphy for a motion.
Mr. President, I move that an urgency be declared within the meaning of Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of Minnesota with respect to House File Number 18, and that the rules of the Senate be so far suspended, as to give House File Number 18 its second and third reading, and place it on its final passage, and I request a roll call.
Roll call requested, roll call granted. The Secretary will give the House file, excuse me, the Secretary will take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules. Senator Boden, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
Senator Umu Verbatim votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye. Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Deames votes aye.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Pratt votes no.
Senator Pratt votes no. All senators having voted who desires a vote, the Secretary will close the roll. There being 50 ayes and 17 nos, the motion to suspend the rules prevails. The Secretary will give the House file its second reading.
House File Number 18.
The House file has been given its second reading. I'll now call on the author of the bill to explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to summarize that the biggest pots in this bill are asset preservation, that's the biggest one, water and roads, and public housing rehab. There are two major projects I wanted to point out, and that's the BCA building in Mankato that will serve all of southern Minnesota for law enforcement, and also the Anoka Miller Hospital, which in partnership with the Human Services Committee and with Senator Hoffman, we are building a mentally secure mental health facility in Anoka that will have 50 beds, and it will help us with the problem of having mentally ill people languishing in jails and in emergency rooms, and it's strongly desired by sheriffs around the state and by hospital administrators. And we, I did finally get the spreadsheet passed out to everyone, and I'll stand for questions and would appreciate your support.
Send there are no amendments at the desk. The Secretary will give the bill its third reading.
House File Number 18, a bill for an act relating to capital investment, authorizing spending to acquire and better public land and buildings, and for other improvements of a capital nature.
Third reading. I'll now go to Senator, Senator Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have never voted for a bonding bill before, and one of the reasons for that is oftentimes we get these huge spreadsheets, these huge bills, that are full of pork projects that don't necessarily serve the interests of the state. But, Mr. President, I am, I am voting for this bill today, and I'm really proud of the work that the Capital Investment Committee members put into it. And the reason I'm voting for this bill today is because this is focused on the core infrastructure that Minnesotans ask us to prioritize. If you look at the money in this bill for roads, bridges, water infrastructure, it's about $291 million. It'll also unlock federal money that puts it in excess of $300 million, Mr. President. We also, in this bill, prioritize public safety with a new regional headquarters for the BCA that'll help serve much of southern and western Minnesota in Mankato, and a critical expansion of direct care and treatments capacity, adding 50 additional beds that will help ensure that we don't have Minnesotans who are languishing in jail waiting to get the mental health treatment that they need. That's responding to our sheriffs, to our county attorneys who have been demanding more capacity. This bill will enable that and help keep Minnesotans safe. We also are investing in important assets for the entire state, whether it's our fish hatcheries, public water access, state parks, veterans' homes. This bill is focused on infrastructure, not pet projects, not people's, you know, local issues that they're trying to get in the bill. This is focused on infrastructure that benefits the entire state of Minnesota, and I'd urge members' support.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Rasmussen said a lot of what I wanted to say, but I'll just say it again. I'm very, very proud of this bill. It is everything I hoped it would be going into the Capital Investment Committee this year. This is what I was hoping we would come out with, and it was a great process from visiting different sites around the state to spending the last two weeks getting different sites around the state to spending the last two weeks getting to know everybody across the aisle, all the way up until midnight, 2:00 a.m. sometimes. This bill is a really good bill. We wanted a no-nonsense bill focused on state-supported functions, and that's exactly what we have in today's bill. Over $290 million is dedicated to critical road improvements, bridge replacements, wastewater upgrades, and other functional infrastructure projects. Couple of highlights of the bill, $42 million in local road improvement program, $20 million for local bridge replacement program, $5 million for township roads, $165 million in water projects if you add what we get using the federal grants, and then another $78 million in using the federal grants. There's also asset preservation from the University of Minnesota to Min State, to more than $7 million to our veterans' homes, public safety, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension in Mankato. These projects are being funded, that are being funded will create thousands of construction jobs, providing additional economic opportunities for workers throughout the state. These investments will be critical in drawing both families and businesses to Minnesota. When we toured projects throughout the state, it was clear that the needs here in Minnesota are high, and bonding bills require bipartisan cooperation so we can serve the needs of the state. This bill is a win for every single community across the state. Speaking of bipartisan, I want to thank Senator Sandy Pappas and co-chairs Rep. Foo Lee in the House for working with us in negotiations. I want to thank Representative Mary Franzen for her passion in getting a bonding bill. I want to thank you so much to our GOP staff, Dan Mickelberg and Liv Kloster, for your long hours in the last couple of weeks. Also, thank you to our nonpartisan staff, Hannah Grunold-Nodler and Stephanie James, for taking my late-night texts. I also want to thank my LA Angelique McDonald and Seat Committee CA Jack Fisher. But I especially want to thank my bonding committee members, Senator Carla Nelson, Senator Michael Kuhn, Eric Pratt, John Jazinski, and especially Jordan Rasmussen, who was a good copilot along the way. I want to thank all of the Minnesotans that came to the Capitol to stress how important our, an infrastructure bill was to you, your communities, and all of Minnesota. I encourage a green vote, and I thank everybody who gives us a green vote. Thank you.
Senator Jazinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would echo all of Senator Housley's comments. A couple additional ones I would like to comment again. Folks, this is where the State Patrol Headquarters Bill should be. It should be in the bonding bill. We should not have stolen the money from trunk highway funds. I wish the State Patrol Headquarters would be in this bill. But other than that, Senator Housley hit it spot on, $291 some million for roads and water, so important to our Minnesotans and especially in my district, very, very important. So, little bit frustrated, there's no local projects, but I understand there was not money there. Local projects, I hope, will be important next year, because next year is typically a bonding year, not this year, but, so I've agreed to vote for this because there are so many important infrastructure things heard. One thing I'm a little bit upset with, the BDPI program was funded below where it should be. The BDPI program is very, very important to many of our districts, so a little bit frustrated that was not done to a higher level. And again, some of my local projects, Waseka with the wastewater and clean water, some things we need. Hopefully, some of this money that goes to the agencies will relieve some of that pressure so that next year we can have some local projects. So with that, I'm going to support this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Members, the last voice we'll hear from will be the author of the bill. It looks like Senator Ann Johnson Stewart wants to say something. Senator Ann Johnson Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought I was on the list. My apologies. I too will be voting green on this bill. The American Society of Civil Engineers has objectively rated our nation and state's infrastructure since 1998, and we have objective data that shows that we're billions of dollars behind in critical repairs to Minnesota's roads and bridges and sewers and water treatment plants, et cetera. In the latest ASE report card, our state's infrastructure received an average C grade. Our roads are in the worst condition, followed by drinking, wastewater systems, and bridges. We've had access to these report cards for the last 25 years, and it's clear that we're not making progress on raising our grades. Every year that we delay funding and work on these projects, they get more expensive, and that's why we must pass this bonding bill. Our local agencies need this bonding bill passed today. Without it, they face hard questions about raising taxes, water rates, and assessments. This bipartisan bill provides over $700 million in construction funding for our entire state. Please vote yes. Please vote yes to provide $62 million to the local road improvement program and local bridge replacement program. This is especially important for local counties and city governments who oversee approximately 80% of our local bridges. 742 of them are in poor condition, according to MinDOT's annual bridge survey. Additionally, we have over 1,000 bridges that have restrictions on the weight or size of vehicles that can cross them. That's especially important in rural areas. Currently, our five-year list of needs includes almost 1,000 bridges that, with an estimated total replacement cost of over $847 million. So while I'm thrilled that we have a bonding bill before us this year, I too will be hoping for one again next year. This bill also provides $5 million to the local road wetland replacement program, again, extremely important to our county engineers who need to implement their road projects affordably. My Republican colleagues on the bonding working group spoke passionately about their concern to provide drinking and wastewater project funding. They should be concerned. Of the 100 highest-ranked cities on the Public Facilities Authority or PFA Drinking Water Priority List, 83 of them are in Republican districts. I personally don't care where they're located. Every Minnesotan should be able to drink the water that comes from their kitchen sink, and I actually support even more funding in that area. We have $43 million for that in this bill, along with another $43.5 million to fund wastewater drinking systems, and $39 million for critical loan and matching grant programs. Again, it's no surprise that the vast majority of those projects that desperately rely on those grants or loans from the PFA are in cities that are represented by my Republican colleagues. The PFA provides critical funding, and I'm so glad that we are, we are putting millions of dollars towards that program. So please vote yes on this bill. Maintaining our state's infrastructure should not be political. Our colleges and universities serve all of us. I don't care what district they're in. This bill funds prisons, a veterans' home, historic sites, museums, and an airport control tower. We are responsible for maintaining these assets, and I'm asking each one of you to seriously consider your vote.
I know we're antsy, and I know this is going a little long, but we want to be respectful and allow her to say, allow-
I don't care.
-Senator Ann Johnson Stewart to make her statements. Senator Ann Johnson Stewart, you may finish. We want to be able to hear you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm getting to the most important part. You know, over the last 30 years, I have taught thousands of engineers and construction employees in their state. I have lots of time on my hands, so I'm letting you all know ahead of time that I'd like you to seriously consider your vote on this bill. I spent all day looking through the PFA list, and I know where these projects are. Senator Farnsworth, residents in District 7 are going to really benefit from this bill if it passes. I look forward to visiting the local bridges that'll be funded in Itasca County. I'll stop by Deer River, Hibbing, and Nashwauk. I'll also come through Aurora, Evlith, and Lone Pine Township, who all have projects rated high in the PFA. Senator Weber, can't wait to come down to Pipestone County and see the local bridges that are going to be funded on Casade 10, 6, 11, and 16 of the five township bridges that will be funded in this bill. There's also a water main project in Pipestone, and I love that city. Senator Westrom, I love Alexandria, and I can't wait to visit your wastewater treatment plant, which is absolutely dependent on this bonding bill being passed, as well as Ortonville's and Appleton's. And while I'm in Appleton, I'll visit their drinking water project, then I'll head over to Glenwood, Benson, Ortonville, and Starbuck to talk to both the engineers and the citizens that live there. Senator Dames, he's not here, so I'll pass him, but Senator Dreheim is here. He lives close to me, so it's going to be pretty easy to visit the many projects in his district. Senator Johnson, I can't wait to visit the woman the Star Tribune talked about this weekend in Kennedy to find out about her water, her water tower, to talk to citizens there about how they might be able to get some more bonding money, and I'm mostly excited to go to Spring Steel Island, who needs a wastewater treatment project, and I've never been that far north. So I'm not kidding about this, guys. I have a presentation ready that outlines how bonding works, how Minnesotans can be more effective in lobbying your legislators, and I'm ready to give it in libraries and at city councils around the state. Bonding should not be political. It is our responsibility to maintain our infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and proper wastewater treatment, and I am dedicated to raising awareness, and I ask for your green vote on this bill.
Senator Pappas, is there anything left for you to say?
No, I'd hope there would be, but thank you so much for my colleagues for explaining the entire spreadsheet in great detail, and I really look forward to having your vote and working with you in the future. Thank you.
Members, the secretary will take the role on final passage of House File 18. Members, remember, 41 votes are needed. Senator Bowden, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator Mohammed votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Klein votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Umu Vabaitan votes aye.
Senator Umu Vabaitan votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye.
And Senator Fattay votes aye. Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Senator Dame votes aye.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Draskowski votes no.
Senator Lang votes aye.
Senator Lang votes aye.
And thank you, Mr. President. Senator Pratt votes aye.
And Senator Pratt votes aye. All members having voted, who desires to vote? The secretary will close the roll. There being 57 ayes and 10 noes, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Members, we have a little business remaining. We will remain under motions and resolutions. We'll revert to messages from the House. The secretary will read the message.
Mr. President, I have the honor to announce the passage by the House of the following Senate File as amended by the House, in which amendments the concurrence of the Senate is respectfully requested. Senate File Number 9, a bill for an act relating to legislative enactments correcting miscellaneous oversights, inconsistencies, et cetera. Senate File Number 9 is herewith returned to the Senate. Signed, Patrick Duffy Murphy, Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
I'll call on Senator Limmer for motion. Senator Limmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate concur in the amendments by the House to Senate File Number 9, and that the bill be placed on repassage as amended.
All in favor of Senator Limmer's motion, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion prevails. The secretary will give the Senate File its third reading.
Senate File Number 9, a bill for an act relating to legislative enactments correcting miscellaneous oversights, inconsistencies, ambiguities, unintended results, et cetera.
Third reading. Senator Latz.
Mr. President, I see that the other body fixed Senator Limmer's corrections bill. It made the corrections to the corrections, and as the chair of a committee that oversees corrections as well as the corrections, I support the bill.
Mr. President.
Senator Limmer.
I'd like to point out that Senator Latz is a co-author of this corrected bill. Very briefly, there were five other amendments that were added as attachments to this. Strangely, Senator Putnam had three of them, and then there were two other from those people in the House. And so, having said that, Mr. President, I ask for a vote and continue the tradition of a strong bipartisan effort of collaboration in the Minnesota Senate.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, the secretary will take the role for final passage on Senate File 9. Senator Jazinski, for those voting pursuant to Rule 40.7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Abler votes aye.
Senator Dames votes aye.
Senator Dame votes aye.
Senator Lang votes aye.
Senator Lang votes aye.
Senator Pratt votes aye.
Senator Pratt votes aye.
And thank you, Mr. President. Senator Duckworth votes aye.
And Senator Duckworth votes aye. All members having voted, who desires to vote? The secretary will close the roll. There being 58 ayes and one nay, the bill is passed as amended by the House, and its title is agreed to. Remaining under motions and resolutions, Senator Murphy.
Mr. President, I move that the Secretary of the Senate may correct and approve the Journal of the Senate for special session, and that the secretary notify the governor in the House of Representatives that the Senate is about to adjourn the 2025 special session signing day.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion prevails. Members, we are now on announcements of the Senate's interest. We're almost done. First thing that I want to say, and then I'm going to Senator Johnson, and then I'm going to Senator Murphy. Without objection, the following senators will be excused from today. Mitchell, 3:45 to 4:30. Nelson, 5:20 to 5:40. Johnson, 9:50 to 10:15 p.m. Draskowski, 12:30 a.m. to 12:35, and 12:50 to 1 o'clock a.m. Members, I want to say that it's been, it's been an honor to once again serve as president of this important chamber, and to watch each day as we all are privileged to make important decisions that impact the lives of millions of Minnesotans. From the very beginning, there's been a hard, this has been a hard fought session in a closely divided legislature, and to get here, we ultimately had to forge relationships and compromises that are not always easy. But as we have done, done it by showing we can do the difficult work of getting things done, and I think Minnesota will be better off for our work. We can't leave this session without remembering our former Majority Leader, Carrie DeSick, who was a dear friend to me and many of us on both sides of the aisle. She reflected what is good about our state and the important, and the important Minnesota values that we all share. We all miss her and the loss of her wisdom and her caring and guidance for our state and for all of us who serve here. God bless. God bless Carrie Deeseck. We also should remember the work of our staff and all the people who come to work in this Capitol each and every day, and remember that we are all here because the people of Minnesota have put their trust in us to work on their behalf. While this has been a difficult few weeks leading up to today, in the end, we came together to forge a balanced budget that reflects not only bipartisanship, but real and often difficult compromise to move Minnesota forward. None of us got everything we wanted, but Minnesotans got a balanced budget that would do a lot of good for a lot of people. And with that, I'm going to Senator Johnson.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members, so much for not only just today, but the year that we've been through. It's been what they call a historic year with the divisions within both the other chamber and our own, and the work that we've done to get to this point. There are days where I can't believe that we actually got to a point where we're signing die, but here we are. We've balanced the budget. It's complete. We won't be shutting down on July 1st. Government will not be shutting down. So that's a big fight that we got through to the end here, but it was a budget full of hard and difficult choices. Let's remember why we're facing these choices, because we are correcting and working on some of the issues that a single-party control with Governor Walz and legislative Democrats have broken the budget, and now we're trying to repair that. They spent an entire $18 billion surplus. They raised taxes and fees by $10 billion and left us with a $6 billion deficit. On top of all that was done, there was wasteful spending, and we haven't seen a willingness to truly address the wasteful spending in this state. There are lots of opportunities to do that this year, proposals that were given by Senate Republicans, ways to work in bipartisan ways to address that, and yet those weren't taken up. We could have put Minnesotans first more often. Minnesotans, students of Minnesota need to be taken care of. We didn't see an effort put into Minnesota students as well. What do we get instead? Instead, we have seniors, seniors who need care. Instead of making sure that we're protecting our seniors, what we're doing is raising a granny tax and really penalizing our nursing homes by $161 million. Instead of helping those with disabilities live full and productive lives in this state, we're cutting those services. Instead of helping our schools with their unfunded mandates and giving them flexibility, we're going to give them cuts as well. Instead of willingness to deal with fraud in a meaningful way in this state, we're just going to go along with the status quo. Simply put, this budget does not reflect Minnesota, and it does not put Minnesotans So the Senate Republicans continue to fight. We fight every day. That's why we came to work. Even though we're in the minority, we came here to work and to fight as a group. I'm very happy to be fighting right alongside my caucus colleagues. I'm also very, very happy to be fighting with Senate Democrats, in particular, Senator Murphy and the relationship that we've bonded over this time. It's quite a stark difference to what happened last year, and just the work that we've done on trying to make sure that this session went through smoothly in a way that respected the desires of our caucuses and the needs within them. And so I hope this is a model that we can continue forward by giving more reflection onto the priorities of the state of Minnesota. So with that, members and staff, thank you for your work this year. You've done such an incredible job. We have a few months off here, but I hope we're getting ready for February 17th. That'll be a fun time next year, but until then, get rested up, and we'll see you around real soon. Thank you.
Senator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to begin with a full list of thank yous to our nonpartisan fiscal staff and council. Thank you. To the front desk staff and Secretary Bodden, to all of the pages and interns who are with us day in and day out, to the sergeants who stand with us, to those that feed us, and to the janitorial staff that keep us safe and healthy, to our LAs and CAs, the leadership staff across the aisle and in our caucus that make this place tick, to partisan research and media, to the House, to the other body and all that they do, to the GOP staff and members, all of you, to Leader Johnson, to my colleagues here in the back of the room, to President Champion, the people of Minnesota. And don't forget about those who are not right here, Senate Information Services, Senate Media Services, HR, Senate Fiscal Staff, Senate Information. All of these entities, all of us together, are what make the Minnesota Senate the special place that it is and give us the ability to serve the people of Minnesota in the way that we want to, with their interest in mind and with our skill and brilliance front and center. I have to say that we're in a much different place than we were a year ago at the close of last session, and there are a lot of things that have forged that difference, beginning, of course, with the loss of Senator Deeseck, and may her memorably a blessing. That loss forced us into, or guided us into, a power-sharing agreement that really forged what is now a much better working relationship for this body. We saw a tied house that slowed some things down, and in the end, because of a closely divided legislature, really by one seat, we have learned not the art of bipartisanship, but what it means to engage in hard-fought compromise. And while there are a lot of things that have moved through this body today that I don't agree with, I am proud of the work that we have done together for Minnesotans, because I think it represents us, the differences that people feel in Minnesota, the differences in our ideas, our ideology, and our values. That's what we're here to do, and compromise, hard-fought, is a real value. There are a number of things that I wanted to accomplish along with my colleagues. We wanted to balance the budget. We wanted to balance it for real. This Senate took that up in earnest, along with the governor. I've got my spreadsheet from Eric Nauman. We came into this session with a structural imbalance in the planning years, in the tails, as we say. Without inflation, $2.4 billion, that's what we're looking at, and we were committed to reducing spending in order to make a difference four years out. And the result of this budget leaves us with a structural imbalance in the tails of just $290 million. We've cut more than $1.3 billion in this budget in order to bring this budget into balance, and that is a steady foundation on which we can build for the future of the people of Minnesota. It's something that I think we should all be proud of. It was a very hard fight with the other body to get there, strangely, harder than it should have been. We wanted to balance the budget to make sure that we're looking out for our kids and schools, our hospitals and clinics, our state parks and correctional facilities, infrastructure, roads, bridges, water, and to make sure, at a time with a president who is recklessly cutting jobs and creating chaos in our economy, that we were looking out for people's jobs and building opportunity. And we did that with transportation, with bonding, and the data centers bill. We also wanted to make sure for us that we looked out for the things that we did for Minnesota over the last two years. Now, in balance, we protected all of that from paid family leave, earned sick and safe, universal school meals, and the child tax credit, nation-leading. The things that we believe in that will support the lives of the people of Minnesota are intact. And last, it was important to us to recognize that there is chaos and uncertainty coming from Washington, DC, and our members have worked very hard to prepare for that, and you can see that in our bills, stable bills that will provide for our schools, our hospitals, and clinics, and communities across the state. This was a hard-fought session, the hardest of my 18 years, and I am proud of what we accomplished, although I am a bit tired, and I bet you are too, which is why I'm going to close. I'm clear about what we've done, our budget, our gains, and what we've accomplished for Minnesotans. Our commitment together here is our North Star, the people of Minnesota. I'm grateful for all of you, for everything that you've done for the people of Minnesota. I look forward to the work we're going to do in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And Senator Murphy has a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn the Special Session signing die.
Any discussion? Seeing none on that motion, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion prevails. The Senate is now adjourned the Special Session signing die.